The Grant County Council order. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Commissioner Barsley and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Scott. If you would stand, as many of you know, we lost a valuable member of this board, Mike Rohrbach on Monday, April the 3rd, 2023. You know, Mr. Rohrbach served his community proudly. And at this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence and then we'll have the prayer if you would.
Gracious God, Heavenly Father, as we bow in your presence today, we're grateful for lives that have been lived out before us. For example, and camaraderie, for good times and bad, we thank you for the memory of Mike Rohrbach. Pray that you'll continue to bless his family. And for all in our community who grieve and mourn, give them comfort, we pray. And now for this assembly, we pray for the council. And as they deliberate over the issues of this county, we ask for wisdom, direction. And we pray, Father, that you will continue to lead this community. All the days of our lives, help us to walk hand in hand with you. For we pray it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Michael. If you want to do the roll call, please.
Scott?
Here.
Connor.
I did have a conversation with Connor. He will not be present this evening.
Hicks?
Here.
Polling?
Here.
Lemming?
Here.
Middlesoe?
Here.
We do have a form. The next item on the Jim of the season is the auditor's report.
You have your general fund report and health insurance fund reports. We're staying sunny, so if you have any questions.
Any concerns from your standpoint?
None at this time.
Are there any questions from the members regarding the auditor's report? Also, at your table and in your packet, you'll have the HR report. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Regular session minutes from March the 15th, 2023. Are there any corrections or errors that need to be addressed in the minutes? If there are none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second, I have a motion for Mr. Lemming, a second, for Mr. Polling to approve the regular session minutes of March the 15th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
A little abstain, Mr. President.
One abstention. So are we still four, three, right? Minutes carry. Now, the other minutes for approval this evening are the special joint session minutes from March the 7th, 2023. Are there any corrections, errors from the special meeting? If there are none, I entertain a motion. Is that something we should do?
Is that something we should do, Mr. President? I guess I would make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Oh, second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Hicks to approve the special joint session minutes from March the 7th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. The first item under due business will be the review of the local income tax presentation. Mr. Darren Bates is with us this evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Hey. Excuse me, I'm a little hoarse. Apparently, I'm going to find out whether I just have allergies. But right now, it's causing me throat problems. So if we look at the one with all the yellow, orange, and blue. The reason we're reviewing this is the state, for five years, has been letting you slide. And you have a lawful income tax, but unlawful dispersal of it. Your current percentages are 10% to every bill and 90% then to qualifying res, if I remember right. And the qualifying res, which was renters and homeowners, well, that's a lot of valid. So the state, basically, in my other three counties that I've already been dealing with prior to you, was they, you don't have a choice. You've got to change that. Because they, the best answer they got was that, well, we'll just put it in your trust fund until you decide to do a lawful credit to a bill. Because that's what you collected on behalf of was credits. You can't throw it over into other buckets when you made it as a credit. So until you do that, you know, that just shifted down to your trust fund at that point. At least that's, again, the other three counties that we were told. So they're already working on going by what I came up with for them. So in your case, the little one here. The top one is instead of 10% to every bill and 90% to qualifying res, you can't do that. But there is still, for one year, we know for a fact, there's a res. Res means, excuse me, res means homeowner rentals. And mobile home rentals, not commercial apartments anymore. So that's where most of your losses have been since 2008, when this thing was implemented, is cap two. So the way around this is we would give 47% of the money, which is, you know, $12.8 million is what you've roughly been collecting, 2% to cap two, which is ag, nursing homes, rentals, and commercials, and, you know. And cap three is 5%, and the res at 46%, which wasn't much different. I tried to give you status quo what you had before. The problem is your diversity of your towns. Marion is heavy on businesses, and they're hitting caps on the businesses and the renters. But all the other communities, especially Gas City and Jonesboro, they're heavy on homeowners. And their rates are high enough that they're hitting caps. So if I tried to help Marion, and I hurt all the other towns, if I tried to help all the others, so I tried to do a balancing act there. And in doing that, when we go back to the first sheet, the yellow is if alls you do is comply with the law, because of the new law eliminating the one that helped you, the bottom line is you're going to lose at the bottom line $996,900, a million dollars is the bottom line as an entire county. So, you know, county government is 210, Marion is 313, Gas City is 10,000. The bottom line, you're losing more money if you just do the basic to get by. Now, the other option is what I've been saying for almost three or four years when you first talked to me or Jimmy Work talked to me about your 911 center. And we talked about it many times about doing a PSAP. PSAP is, for generic terms, 911. All that deals with 911. Right now, you have an agreement between the city of Marion, Gas City, and Jonesboro, which is the second, the current 911, $511,000 Grant County gives, $464,000 Marion gives, $180,000 from Gas City, and $2,500 from Jonesboro. The bottom line is none of the other towns contribute to that. So if we did PSAP, everyone in the county is funding your 911 center. You're no longer at the mercy of caps because it's an income tax. And at that point, when you look at the other sheet with all the different things down here, what I was doing was creating $2.5 million using a .2. I have a 20 there, but I got tired of using decimals. It's .2 of a percent. Generates $2.5 million for your PSAP. You have a special .01 currently going to your economic development. Move that back to what originally it was, was ceded money, which you did three, four years ago. You moved .02 of that, moved the final .01 to ceded. Ceded is another revenue that the county and all the towns can use for just by any purpose. Because we have to combat, again, rearranging the lit cap losses. So, and then finding your public safety, which people don't have a problem with public safety, 911. So we gave it a .05, which generates $634,000 to your public safety. Now, if we do that, that's what the orange column is about. Again, you're still losing money on the caps because we're not rearranging all those where you need, where you're losing the money. And the final though, because you're getting PSAP and the current, again, your example is Gas City ends up with $146,000 positive though because they're going to get, they're not going to, no longer have to come up with $180,000 of, out of the general fund that they allocated. And the $23,000 of public safety, they come up with a positive. Just about all the cities and towns come up with a positive value. But the point is, you're not given enough to matter to cap two and three. If you look at the rate on this real small one, the actual rate that's on a tax bill is barely 1%. You know, 1.05 and 1.3. It's a choke. It's just a waste of time, and it makes the bills more complicated, audited, answer more questions. So my suggestion would be, and I worked on it for hours, trying to figure out what's the best balancing act to remove this .25 from your credits to give you money elsewhere to pay your bills. And it comes down to, instead of 47%, it would be 45%. The end result was homeowners are getting, last year, they were getting 24%, but you had an influx or excess, you know. Every other year, it's like a gummy gummy with the state. Your credits are high this year, last year they're low, next year they'll be low again. So basically, 25 is where I look at. They'd be nearly 20, 19.55. And if the income tax is better, it might be 20. So you're losing 5%, but your res, you're going from nearly 40% down to 36%. The bottom line is you've moved, you know, a bunch of money out of there, $3 million, from $12.8 million down to $9.8 million to try to combat your other expenses. So it's simple. You just make a 45% to cap one and 55% to res. And we know this is good for next year. When I tried to talk to the state on behalf of the other counties, they said, ah, we can't guarantee that it's good for the year after that. They didn't say they're going to do away with it, but not saying that it's still going to be there. Legislators nearly got rid of it this year. And they tacked on something at the last minute, and it failed to vote on the second round. So doesn't mean if they drop that next year, they'll get it passed. And then you lose res, and all you have is cap one, two, and three. If that happens, you're going to, this time, I got you down to a million dollar loss trying to use the res without rearranging. If they do it with res, county-wise, you're going to lose almost $3.8 million. It's just they're making it harder and harder to deal with credits because they're trying to phase them out. We've been hearing that for three years now. What they're trying to do is reduce business personal properties. They tried to jack it up this year from 80,000 to a quarter million. Luckily, I didn't have to run an analysis because it died in ways and committee. But again, they're going to try it next year. In your case, there's 1800 bills, I believe, that are business personal property. And if they raised it, you'd only have 160. That's a lot of business not paying taxes at that point. So I'm just trying to get ahead of the game, trying to get you in a better situation here. Because when they change something, all it does is keep hurting you. So, sorry.
This time, I'll put forward the questions from the members.
So what are you recommending we do?
My personal opinion, based on the numbers, is that you move the .01 from special, which is your Economic Growth Council. Yeah, down at the bottom there, you see the special, let's see where did it? Special purpose was .01, taking it to zero. In other words, Economic Growth Council won't get the $126,000. But the $126,000, then county commissioners will get 60,000, Marion gets 55,000. That's what the $126,939, that's all based on this year's values. So it's not a fact that next year, you're going to get up to the penny or dollar here. But it's what I have to go by.
Right.
So the bottom line is we got to get you and the other towns more money because of the cap losses. So that .01 was kind of hanging out there. And again, your 911 center, that will generate $2.5 million. So there's the .2.
So implementing PSAP at .2?
Yes. And then you got a .05 for public safety. And there's a short list compared to ceded, for public safety, what you can use that money for. But the city of Gas City and Marion both indicated they really liked the idea of having some public safety money that's earmarked for whatever that list is. Which in your case is $301,000 and 276, and $19,000 for Gas City. The bottom line is the final column on the multicolor. The last column is my recommendation is what would happen if you rearranged things. And there's nothing to help schools. They don't get lit money. They don't, you know, they're on their own. Rearranging, no matter what we do, everyone, you know, the yellow column says everyone's going to lose money. So how can we combat at least some of them not losing money? Which towns and county government are the most important ones. So the end result in county government would end up with $579,000. And Marion would have $167,000, and Gas City would have $153,000. So, you know, it would benefit all the municipalities at that point. You know, cities and towns and county government.
Yeah, his recommendations, the purple column, and he's saying the final column
On the last page.
Is on the last page on the right-hand side, which again, what we've done before is that the schools would be affected the most, and then they have no means of making up the difference, correct?
Correct. Other than they have the best ability is referendums for them.
Yeah.
That's happened almost every year in two or three counties. I'm in 57 counties now. I'm seeing it all the time. As long as there are sensible referendums to improve, you know, the building, they pass. If it's for beautification, it don't pass.
But this is the start of the tax council, as far as that goes. That's why we met together with, you know, the city of Gas City and the city of Marion, kind of get some people's take, or look in over all these things. Because every time we turn around, we're having that issue where if the state's pulling this back or you don't get these funds unless you have a PSAP, you don't have these funds unless you have a real tax. So we're trying to, I was kind of speaking for you two there, but I think that this is really what we need to know. This is the reason we're trying to adjust these, is we're trying to keep monies coming here, keep all the things moving in the right direction. But we have to get more, sad to say, taxes in the lane it needs to be in, is really what we're trying to do.
But not increase your current income tax.
We're all taxed.
Every one of my counties, I have never had one of my counties increase their income tax.
Right.
It's rearranging cash management, old school cash management, rearrange what you got.
And that's being forced on the state, onto all the counties. So, you know, they can't watch it.
The tax rate stays the same. It's not additional funds. It's just rearranging.
Yeah. Now, if they, the easiest answer is in 2008, or eight and nine, there was 10, 12 different ways they could predict bills. As you can see now, if you count cap one, two, and three as one way, and res, you only have two ways, and they're trying to eliminate that one. But on the other hand, back then, there was only three or four buckets that you could pay your bills. Now, there's like nine different ways. So they're saying, look, we're making ways, legislators are making ways to pay your bills. And all that's your income tax that are necessities, they mandate you to do. And therefore, why aren't you utilizing them?
So a lot of the people that I'm seeing right now, when I look at their taxes, all their tax forms, it's the state of Indiana and the county almost the same. It's really uncanny to look at that.
Yours is 2.55, and theirs is, what, 2.9?
Yeah, it's pretty darn close.
Yeah. I mean, once I had their 3.4 or 3.3 because Plasky was at 3.4. They're the only one that I ever dealt with that lowered theirs. They're now 2.8. The average statewide 10 years ago is two. Now it's two and a half. And I tried everything I could do to get you to two and a half. But right now, your PSAP was too important. I wanted to see if we could manage the numbers, get you positive.
Well, I know I hear it all the time about different counties and how close we are on taxes, if we're higher or lower.
But I got asked the last county, where are we at with our taxes? And I said, everyone's just saying, you're all getting capped out, bottom line. I mean, it's been 15 years, and our system wasn't supposed to last, but 10.
Can you speak briefly to the .2 for the 22 years for the jail? The one, the members that work at that?
Oh, yeah. There is a correctional slash rehabilitation. You no longer can go to the state and ask them for a special tax. I mean, it near impossible. So what it is, created the ability for you to create a jail fund for better terms. No more than .2, which in your case would be the same as your PSAP, $2.5 million. The catch is you can only do it for 22 years. So in your case, 22 years, $2.5 million is basically $55 million dedicated to that. It's all for is to pay, because so many counties are either needing to renovate or build or build on to their jails. And I've helped three counties now, Walt Bage Huntington years ago. But Walt Bage to do that correctional once it came available. And Walt Bage is doing, as she told me two nights ago, it's still a nightmare, but at least it's our nightmare instead of the federal and the state jumping down our throat on every time we turn around and have to bust them over and pay millions of dollars to Miami County. There's math, Miami County, they stopped it maybe because now they're, in those two years, they won't get all that money. But I'm finding ways to rearrange their deal the same way. Now, the bottom line is you can actually have a 3.5% income tax. But the catch is only 2.5 you can use your buckets to pay bills. The other 1% is given credits. And that's again, why they're trying to say, look, the law is 2.5% to pay your bills. The credits should have never been there. And that's why we're trying to phase them out because, you know, we have cap one, two, and three. You can count on it. Hearing that for 15 years now. You can count on, it's been a mess.
And a little bit we talked about in the meeting, I mean, it'd be nice to phase out the credits over, you know, three or four years, right? However, since we go to the tax council, it's only one year at a time.
Yeah, the state is crazy enough that you could work out a beautiful deal, everyone agrees it's a day, but it's only good for one year. You can't obligate, because some of you may not be in this position. And the next person, well, I wouldn't have agreed to that. I don't know, they got all stupid reasons, so if it was, so all you can do is say, here's what we want to do. And that's why I came up with this. Now, the question is, is how the economy's doing, different things, you know. Again, that's the other reason. You don't know how the economy is going to do year after year. So all you can do is look at what can you do for next year. And one of the questions that was asked of me by one of the members, why don't we just rip the band-aid off and get rid of the credits all at once? And I said, the best answer, not mine, but at a county, was you got a very severe leg injury. And do you try to go to the doctor and have him bend it and fix it? No, I'll just amputate it off. You know, it's too bad. It's gone. Now, a little common sense, you try to do what you can in steps. Now, if you had a .2?
Get rid of it.
You got a .1%. And I was trying for a third of that, but it's just the numbers didn't work right now. Maybe next year, if the 2.5 billion is doing fine, or over more than you need, maybe we could lower that to .18 and move that over to public safety. The bottom line is, this is not, the state requires every two years to review this. And we used to do it every year, but COVID and everything messed up. The point is, you're at the crest now. Caps are through the roof for you in the last three years. So we really need to analyze it each year, whether you do it, whether you do it at all. You really have to do something here, and I think you should be losing money. If you just do the yellow, what you have to do to comply with the law, you're losing money, period, and you don't have to. You got the credits. You can rearrange them. The bottom line is, the state is notorious for just, as you have known for years, making a split decision and saying, oh, by the way, you can't do that anymore. If they did that to you right now, county government, you would lose $1.8 million next year. You'd have to figure out how to cut that budget time, $1.8 million. City of Marion, $3.4 million. Gas City, I think it was $1.2 million. It's out of the blue. So that's where I'm telling other counties, get ahead of the game. You've heard the stories, oh, it doesn't, it doesn't really happen. Oh, yeah, this, all this stuff keeps happening.
I guess the timeline for the members' information would be we would schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting, and then have an idea of, you know, what rates you want to pass. And then would have a public hearing at the next meeting, and the other tax council would have 30 days
Yes.
to approve or disapprove.
Now, the catch is you have to, they, at least I've been told, is Marion and you have to agree. Or you and Gas City and two or three others have to agree because of the numbers. But if you don't pass something, you at least got time to massage it. Because not, you can't present, you got one shot presenting it. But Gas City and Marion, either one of them could present something that is different than what you decide on. And I've been informed that they both can make decisions without you, that they both agree. But then at that point, you're at the mercy, whether they decide. And if they had me come, again, I would give them the same recommendation at that point. There's no reason to lose money when you have the ability to generate money. Be ahead of the game. Don't make the state kick you around.
Any other questions or comments for the members? Can I open it up for any of the other units if they have questions?
Sure.
If any of the other units have questions, you can come to the podium and...
I think we just got one or two. That's all.
All of them have the minutes. All, all of them.
I'm Larry Troyer, President, Gas City Council. Darren, on the final column, does that include any increased cap losses?
Yes.
If it does have a cap losses included in that.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was trying to do was the ship, the orange, right here, the blue, the 45, 55%, how it's going to affect and the difference. And therefore, but you then, in your case here, you're going to lose 50, but you're going to gain 23 and 180. So the final, you'll end up with 153 more.
Just had me confused right there with the PSAP credit.
Well, you are paying currently.
180.
I'm sorry, 180. 911. You're getting a 911. And I had it wrong. Between seated, let's see, seated, Gas Cities, your Gas Cities, seated, is $3,900. Oh, and your public safety. So it's 23.
That's what was confusing me.
Yeah, I, yeah, I should have said, I'm stopping. Mine was on 911. Is public safety, PSAP, seated?
That's what had me confused.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And then the 180,000 goes away because we're going to generate 2. some million through the.
Exactly. So you no longer have to do an inter-agency agreement with other towns. That's wiped away then, making your life easier.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the members? If you have any other scenarios that you want to see prior to the next meeting, let me and Darren know and I'm sure you could put the sheet together for your review.
It's, I worked on this for hours. It's kind of hard to find anything different than this, but I'm always willing to see what happens because everything I came up with is like, crap, that won't work. I keep going in the red at the end. Like, there's no way. I'm known for making money, not losing.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren.
And if you need me at the next meeting, you set some date, but hopefully you don't.
Thank you, Darren.
Thanks.
We're going to do a public hearing. We'll have to advertise.
But the whole point is.
The official.
The next item under new business, county commissioners, Mark Barzley with additional appropriation of the general fund, transfers of appropriation to the general fund as well as transfers of appropriation in cumulative development, which is 11, 38, 5.
Thank you.
All right. Is the appropriation request for, sorry. I mentioned last month that we would be coming back, that we needed that, the additional appropriation. It was to assist us with that 53,000 with the Stanley Convergent Security Solutions that we agreed to last year. And then we'll be able to have a balance that we can continue. We are looking at probably a few more additions to contractual services. We're working with the treasurer's office. It won't be a major output, but an agreement where we'll be getting them a new debit system, credit card system. And so we do have things that we're trying to forecast and make sure that we have enough in that particular line item. And the 70,000 would help us to have that appropriation.
Are there any questions regarding the additional appropriation within contractual services in the amount of 70,000?
I thought last year on this 53,000, you guys were going to start doing that in the house, so we didn't have to pay that.
The system that they have, they're still trying to learn what to do, but we can't do it in-house yet.
How long ago was that? I was thinking it was just like the end of the fall.
We talked, we talked about a year contract, but we had to go to a three-year contract.
So would they need more training or something to show them how to do it?
The, the system, I can't, I can't tell you about, is Marcus on there?
He's on there.
Marcus, are you on there? Can you tell us about the Stanley Convergent Security Solutions Agreement? See if he's actually paying attention. But we did know it was, it's coming. That's why we mentioned it last, last month, so.
Any other questions or comments from the members?
So why couldn't we do a year?
The way the contractual agreement was, we kept pushing, y'all kept pushing us to go to a year and they, they wouldn't allow. We couldn't come to an agreement. We had to have it for officer safety and stuff with the system. So we went ahead and agreed to do that. We did it all together.
You know, we did it for one year and this year was supposed to be in-house and what was that.
Yeah, I was, I guess that's what I was thinking when we did it last year. We did it in the fall. So one year would be from like, would we implement it? That's what I was thinking.
I don't recall it exactly that way. I remember the discussion though.
So is there not enough funds in there currently to pay it?
No, we are in the hole. Hopefully, after we get that 70 across, we'll have just at less than $20,000 to carry out most of the year. And as was noted, we do expect probably to have to transfer some funds from some other accounts as well.
So I guess to clarify the questions, are you saying the 53, 760 is going to be a reoccurring payment for two more years?
That is correct.
Okay.
We will try and, we will put that into the 24 budget so that it's not a surprise for us anymore.
But we can't, I mean, we can't figure out what these guys need to figure this out so we don't have to pay it for two more years?
We can, we can continue to press that issue. I'm just not sure that we have the, the expertise to step into that. I'm just not sure that we do.
But once we commit to this, we're committing to three years.
Well, technically, we, I think we did it last year. We did commit. So this is our second year.
No, we didn't commit last year. We committed for one, one year and you guys are going to keep us in-house.
That's not exactly the way I remember it, but I remember the discussion and we tried to do it for one year. And we, if you recall, we did this over six to eight months of trying to get to that one-year thing and we couldn't do it with the company.
Yeah, because they wanted you to sign longer ones.
Mm-hmm.
Well, three other questions, comments from the members? There's no questions or comments. I entertain a motion.
So what happens if we don't make a motion to pay this? What are we going to be doing?
Probably going to court. That won't be your attorney. That'll be our attorney.
Is this for?
Is it a 12-month period?
Is this to keep it updated and everything?
I, I can't give you the, all the details, but it's our annual payment.
It says maintenance and monitoring, so.
Yeah.
How much is the cost of maintenance? It's a computer.
Well, I can't, well, we're talking computer and we're talking cameras. And I think as we built it into that particular contract, that they will be here within so many hours and some of them are still under, under warranty, maintenance type of things that we can even get replacements.
Are all cameras in operation right now?
I don't think so. Do we have all cameras in the jail operating?
I believe they're all operating. We've had a few go down, but they've come back.
So in a sense, we are utilizing our insurance policy.
I'd like to be the insurance.
I lose a really bad taste in my mouth.
We're becoming more and more slaves to the systems we buy.
Yeah, but can't we send our IT guys to some kind of school or something, get them more on board, John Taff? Well, you can't answer.
I'm sorry. He is the boss, though, you know.
I'm the boss, but I can't, I can't articulate IT issues very well.
Return, all return.
That's about it.
If I remember during the discussion, they had an hourly rate that we could pay as well, or am I thinking something?
There was an offer for an hourly rate and I think that we figured out that we were doing better here than we were with hourly call-ups.
Yeah, because they had to replace something, one or two things. I think last year they had to, that kind of answer would.
So what's the process if a camera goes down the jail, crew calls the IT or they go straight to this company?
It used to be, and I don't know if, if Mr. Camery is the go-to person now, but I think Mr. Carmichael in the past was, if something went down, that they would call him.
So we, we called directly to Stanley when something goes out because the IT can't actually fix it. There's software things that need to be updated. There's a lot of things that go into this, this operation. We inherited it, but actually, there's a lot of things that sometimes we have cameras go offline. They can, they can come in, we'll call them. They can, they can phone in, fix it from their offices, things like that. There's, there's things that happen on a weekly basis sometimes that we have to, we have to call and get stuff fixed or at least worked out.
Is this something the commissary account can handle or not?
I, that's not my bailiwick, so.
Everything I think that's fixed to the buildings is responsibility of the county commissioners and that's what these things are. It's part of, it's part of the apparatus of the building.
I mean, I, since I've been on here, all I hear these IT guys say, we can't fix it. We can't fix it. These guys are paying thousands and hundreds of thousands.
But you have to remember, and we bought a system.
Educate people though.
But if we're dealing with proprietary things in their system, they aren't going to give every IT department across the nation access to their proprietary information to work on stuff.
I do believe this system was purchased out of commissary. I, I think it was.
Nobody over there was, was?
Yeah.
But yeah, it sounds like to me that the commissioners have already committed the contract.
Well, the Lord has made us born out. I'll make a motion to pass it.
I have a motion for Mr. Polling, a second for Mr. Fleming to approve the additional appropriation of the contractual services in the amount of $70,000. Any other questions for the members? Public input? Rule call, please.
Polling?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Scott?
Scott.
Ix?
Yes.
Mittelsohn.
Yes.
Motion carries. Proceed on, sir.
Thank you. And I will, for the sake of our discussion, go back and talk to them again and say, why can't we go annual?
Well, I'm just saying, every time we come to these, these computers, everybody says, every department, they can't handle it. When it comes time to, everybody get raises, everybody's praising how well they do. Well, then we're through the whole year, everybody's saying, well, they can't handle this. They can't handle that. Surely, it's in some kind of school.
Hard, some hardware stuff they can do, but when it comes to the software stuff, they're not writing programs. So, but I do thank you and I will follow up on that. Thank you, Chuck. Under the general fund request for a transfer from the unemployment line item to workers' comp in the amount of $15,000, we are seeing a lot of injuries and problems. And not to point any fingers, but we are seeing a lot in the, in the jail. That happens a lot. So we are going to need to see that increased. And I can talk about cumulative here in a minute.
Is there any questions regarding the transfer from unemployed to workman's comp in the amount of 15,000? There's no questions. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, I motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Fleming to approve the following transfer from unemployed to workman's comp with the amount of 15,000. Any public input? Rule call, please.
Scott?
Scott.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ix?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Mittelsohn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the other is just a transfer from the one line item vehicles to the sheriff's vehicles. It got changed up last year and as a general rule, we spend 120 to 150,000 for new vehicles. We were doing about 33 or 30 to 35,000 per charger. Now we're looking at more SUVs than, than, than chargers because they dropped from a V8 to a V6, haven't they?
And they're going electric. They're going, quit making the chargers happen this year.
Well, you guys got to have them too, Sheriff. I mean, a bus got to have them.
As long as we, all the generators behind us, you might be okay with that.
Pretty much just housekeeping to sweep that back over so we can care for approximately three or so vehicles for the sheriff's department this year.
Any questions or comments from the members?
This isn't the same fund that we use for the ambulance we bought, right?
No. We, commissioners have a vehicle. We have a line item for the sheriff's vehicles and then we have the EMS at a different point.
So this will not interfere with the ambulances?
No. And, and again, our previous auditor was banking on the fact that we wouldn't have a payment this year with the new ones because they're a year plus out on the new ambulances that we ordered.
I know I had a question. I guess the sheriff can answer. You know, we spent a lot of money painting sheriff's cars two-tone and, you know, the sheriff's association said that, you know, the sheriff's car should be black, not black, brown, right? And then you remember we had to, they'd be two-tone, we had to paint them back to a solid color. And now I'm starting to see the fleets being in different colors. Is that no longer the case where they all have to be brown?
Yeah, we're going to white to save money because of that very reason. It was costing us more money to buy the brown cars than ever to paint the hood a different, a darker brown. We decided that we're just going to go with white vehicles. They're easier to get. Brown is kind of on the way out with everything. Brown will get harder to get for us. So we're no longer vying by that. We're going to go with our own vehicles to try to save as much money as we can.
You couldn't get it in those Tahos and stuff.
Yeah, and some of the Tahos, if things aren't coming in those colors. So we're just going to go to basic colors and try to save that money.
You could probably wrap too if you were in a campaign.
That is true, yeah.
I just know it was a big deal back then and the sheriff's associations that, you know, they're going to be this color. I just was questioning what, what the, what the changes were.
Yeah, other than I started moving away from it too, so.
Thank you.
Did we already vote on that? I didn't pay attention.
We have a motion. Any other questions or comments from the members? If not, I entertain a motion.
So this isn't adding to that 120 to 150?
No, we had, we had, for whatever reason, dropped, I want to say, it's not in front of me, but maybe 30 or 40,000 instead of the 120 to 140,000 as we shifted that trying to anticipate what the, we would or wouldn't have to do with the new ambulances, so.
But well, factored in a year after they get to, after they get the ambulances, do I have to pay for them?
That'll be the calculation that we work with the auditor's office on. And again, we probably won't see that bill till sometime in January or February if they're ready by that time. We don't pay till they, we don't start the payments until. We don't pay till they we don't start the payments until they actually deliver.
Can I base some of this out of Sheriff's commissary?
Again, as as Sheriff mentioned, infrastructure types of things, when it comes to ownership by the county, it usually falls on the commissioners. And I I don't know, again, know what the uniqueness is of what can and can't be spent when it comes to.
Have you been to the mayor general and asked for any vehicles?
Haven't tried that yet.
Rodney got Rodney Park got one.
Well, we'll definitely try. We we do partner with the commissioners in a lot of things, and and vehicles is one of them, that we have purchased a couple from the commissary just to help out as much as we can.
When you do that calculation, you're saying that bill will come in January or February of twenty four?
If they deliver.
So when we do the budget here in a few months?
We have to assume that it's going to it's going to be delivered.
So this seventy five thousand is going to affect that C C D line?
Well, currently, we're still making, we have a certain amount banked in the E M S fund for the ambulances, so we're anticipating that line, and this fund was actually manipulated from the commissioner's vehicle and rotate, excuse me, from the sheriff's vehicles into the commissioner budget, which really wasn't necessary. If I don't know exactly what was done.
So if next year you have the ambulance payment, there's a good cha good case that whatever line item vehicles, sheriff's vehicles could be lower to make that payment.
It's possible. We we just don't know all that technically.
Which we had a little bit of conversation, but you could use possibly the the A R P funds just to go ahead and pay that ambulance loan off would probably be an option.
Yeah, and we're we're starting to move on that. We think we can bank at least eight million of that that's not going to be committed anywhere. That'll be coming in in the next month or so.
Sheriff, did you catch that? We don't know yet, coming into twenty twenty four, there'd be that chance that that seventy five thousand may have to come off. We don't know yet, but.
I heard that.
Possibility exists.
We're keeping our fingers firm.
You and the tax council are going to take care of it.
Any other questions or comments from the members? If not, I entertain a motion.
President moved to approve the appropriation as presented.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Lemming to approve the following transfer within the C C D fund vehicles to sheriff's vehicles in the amount of seventy five thousand. Any other questions or comments? Public input? Rule call, please.
Scott?
All right.
Lemming?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item under new business, item C, County Highway Department, David White, with an additional appropriations within the Kingdom Bridge Fund, also additional appropriation within the N V H Fund. Are you getting?
You want to start with the bridge fund first, or how do you want to?
The N V H Fund's fine.
Okay. Bridge fund, we're asking for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to be put contractual services. This is for inspection and inventory of small structures, basically anything called a pipe thirty six inches or bigger up to a bridge. We haven't done this inspections in two thousand and ten. It's supposed to have been done every five to six years is what they recommend, so we'd like to get this caught back up, and actually commissioners kind of agreed on it towards the end of December, so that's why we didn't get it in last year's budget, so.
And this fund supports any requests?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? It's additional appropriation, an amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to contractual services regarding the Kingdom Bridge Fund. Questions from the members? I entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Lemming to approve additional appropriation within the Kingdom Bridge Fund in an amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Public input? Rule call, please.
Scott?
All right.
Lemming?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Thank you. The next thing I was going to bring up was additional for a road foreman's position. Last meeting, I don't know if everyone was present, Tony Smith came because I was at road school, and currently about a month ago, I had my road foreman and bridge foreman both retired basically within two weeks of each other. One I knew was going to happen, and the other was kind of unforeseen. And I've always kind of worked on trying to do something different on the road foreman position because they take care of eight hundred miles, and it's quite a bit on one person to keep track of, you know, inventory, road conditions, et cetera, so I'd like to try to split it and do like a west side of the county and east side, and then that gentleman would be in charge of just that side of the county that they were in charge of. I think it'll help us a lot on, you know, when we get wheel tax money, et cetera, trying to keep a, you know, course of plan of how we want to use our money wisely and not be doing roads that we've done five years ago or something like that. So that's what I'd like to try to do, and then that gentleman would be in charge of basically eight guys on each side of the county, and, you know, and then when we went to do like a big project such as paving or chip selling, everybody would work together. This is a working foreman's position, so they'd be out there every day with the employees just like normal, so. So I kind of broke it down, what it costs to pay for that position for the rest of this year with Medicare, health insurance, life insurance, PERF, et cetera. So I've got a total to be basically forty six thousand, two hundred and eighty nine dollars to finish out the rest of this year for that position, and then, of course, next year, I just budget it as one a new position.
So just the one that was a dump truck driver involved in the road foreman?
Well, I kind of eliminated that and just said, I'm going to keep the truck driver's position and add the truck driver or the road foreman position, so.
So this request is to increase a road foreman's position, this dollar amount to the salary amount, I mean?
Right.
Yeah, right.
For the rest of this year.
What's the total salary?
I believe they get paid forty seven thousand wage wise for the year for the and then, of course, the health insurance, et cetera.
But wasn't last month, wasn't there like one of the, I don't know what they were called, interior maintenance guys was going away to make this?
That's how I presented the last time.
Okay.
Was to do away with the truck driver's position. I really didn't want to because the only thing I thought was it'd be about a six thousand dollar difference.
Pay wise.
Pay wise, but I really didn't want to do that, so that's kind of presented it this way.
But what you're asking is to add a brand new employee?
Right, correct.
Which would cost more than six thousand dollars?
Right, that's basically to finish out this year, you're over forty six thousand dollars.
And you got another eighty thousand for your floors?
Well, that's to finish the building project.
I thought you guys were flooring too.
We already paid for the concrete, I was going to have somebody else do the flooring.
You was here before, though, you said you guys were on the floor.
No, he's going to do the drainage and everything to get it all ready.
How do you pick for the concrete if you have it in four?
Bought it last year at last year's prices, we saved some money.
Really? Like I want?
I got, I always have a yearly contract on stone gravel, et cetera, so I just got a price on that. Might have paid for the stone, and then I wanted to get the drainage in and all that, and so.
So it's all set.
How many estimates you get on this floor?
I've got four contractors sent out right now. I got them till Monday to give me the quote or estimate.
So you actually really don't know it's going to cost eighty thousand dollars?
Not really. I'm hoping it'll be less.
How many square feet is it, or how many yards is it? What size is the building?
Hundred and sixty eight feet long, ninety two foot wide, but three ten foot by twenty foot approaches out on the turn.
Wow. Big book.
Six inch flat?
That's right, yeah.
I kind of liked the 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 deal last month when you're eliminating the position, and you're good, because I'll be honest with you, I don't think the county really needs to be hiring any new employees at any department. So I just.
Well, you just heard that guy said, we want to start taking away every year from the.
Well, you you got to hire a person because you're missing somebody, right? Truck driver.
Well, you're going to transfer the truck driver to that position.
Yeah, I understand. It's a difference in salary or position, but you got to hire a person.
Right.
How hard is that going to be?
I've got basically three positions open right now.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, if I move somebody up, I'll have four, so.
So you're creating your own domino effect?
Right, and I'd be honest with you, I've interviewed the last two weeks. I mean, I think I've got some good candidates for if I do move the position up, and then also I've already interviewed a few people coming from outside, so.
I assume we're waiting on you to look at something.
Show me some papers over there.
I just I don't remember how many foremans he had, so I was looking it up.
I have a garage foreman, garage foreman, a bridge foreman, and a safety director. They all make forty seven thousand somewhat dollars or.
So your garage and grid or your road and bridge foreman left?
Both retired.
Well, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
And and I'm fine with just doing eliminate the truck driver's position and doing, I'd be glad.
Sure, I don't know that we've had you fully.
He had problems always being truck drivers, though, right? Most of the time?
Yeah.
But we've always been short at least one, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, last fall, I thought I had all my positions filled in October, so I was going to make it through the winter. Had one gentleman started work for two weeks and quit, so.
So those monies returned to the general fund anyway at that point, right? That's what we're saying.
This isn't general fund money, this is the wage.
I'm sorry, yeah, they're they're a budget, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'd be I'd be willing to make a motion to give you the position of these to see if we can get it filled.
Yeah, because it's going to be harder harder for you to hire a doctor driver, I'd say, with you.
Yeah, I mean, it's a working position. So I guess I would put that in the form of a motion, how's that?
Okay, so your motion is to amend the salary ordinance, create a road foreman's position at the.
What would be the base salary, the twenty eight, five sixty?
I didn't read my salary ordinance, I'm sorry, I do not have that.
There would be the thirty six.
This would be the remainder of the year, twenty six, five sixty, the actual salary amount I don't have with me.
So I didn't want the motion to be more than.
Creating the position with the salary for the remainder of the year. And then when we work the budgets, we'll add that employee back in.
But it's his base salary would be the same as.
The other foreman's.
Right, would be. Yeah, I can't tell you because I don't know. Okay, so the motion would be to create, amend the salary ordinance, create the road foreman position at the base rate of the other foremans within the highway department, and then approve the additional appropriation as outlined, the additional twenty eight, five sixty in the road foreman, additional two thousand, one eighty five in the social security, the health insurance, eleven thousand, three hundred and forty, and the life insurance, a hundred and forty five, hundred and fifty four dollars, and then the PERF at the four thousand, fifty six dollars. Is that right? And then this would be effective when?
Yeah, I wouldn't go start until after I got approval, so it'd be next payroll if I do.
Next payroll, okay. What's the date of that?
My calendar from.
I took all the calendars out. Whenever the next paycheck comes up.
The twelfth, May twelfth?
How many of these other guys were?
That payroll?
Shop foreman and all these other.
Because next one is due the twenty eight. The schedule beginning would be April twenty four.
Knock his morale down, this guy's going to get hired new and making the same money as the guy that's been there for years.
It'll be somebody when it comes up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Somebody.
Yeah, it'll be when they move up.
Any other questions or comments from the members?
I don't think we have a second yet.
Are we on the second? We have a motion for Mr. Lemming. I outlined what the motion was. Is there a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Polling.
Are we eliminating a position?
That's what I was going to say, are you going to add eliminating a position?
That was kind of our hope last time, I mean, but I mean.
That's not in the motion right now.
No, it wasn't in the motion, but I was waiting a little bit to see what you would. I I think you'll be lucky the rest of the year to fill your position personally, that's what I think.
Boy, it's not going to be easy, I can tell you that.
That's what I mean, I don't I don't think you'll get it done, so however you want to make the amended, I'll do it either way.
Depending on which direction you go. See, my my vote will.
One thing I can say is if we don't fill it, the money won't leave, you know what I'm saying? I guess that's one thing good is if we don't fill it, like I said, we've been since last October with that position not filled, the money just stays there, so, I mean, not like we're spending it, so.
So we've already pretty much eliminated because we can't find anybody for it.
Pretty much, yes.
So we can just, I'll just amend it to that, we'll just eliminate it for now, we'll see where we go, finish out the year with bigger pay.
Are we eliminating?
The truck driver, yeah.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
It's going to be gone, they're not going to go all the amendment, it's a chance, okay?
If you get plowed in, stoned, you know what happens?
I'm good, Larry takes care of me, so.
Mike will get out. I'll call the rest of you, dude, Mike will get out.
He'll live out there, okay.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the salary ordinance, remove the truck driver's position, add a road foreman position with the outline for the rest of the year with the social security, health insurance, life insurance, and PERF. The start date is the twelfth.
It would be the twenty fourth of April.
Twenty fourth of April. And we're good with the motion and the second from Polling and Lemming.
The amended motion, the amended motion.
The amended, yeah. Do we have to put on amended motion now?
We never really amended it, did we? We never voted on the first one.
I mean, you had a you had a motion.
Yeah, it's a motion and a second, so.
I think you're ready for public input.
Yeah.
But what do we have to do with the first motion?
He already amended it, he was fine with the amendment, so yeah.
Public input? A rule call, please.
Lemming?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Scott?
All right.
Hicks?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Then next is for the eighty thousand for the building project to complete the flooring and some of the electrical and stuff for that. I can tell you that we are going to eliminate one building that we have at the Boys and Girls Club area where our highway used to be. In fact, we just got that cleaned out yesterday, so hopefully the commissioners are either going to give it to the Boys and Girls Club or whatever, I don't know what they're going to do with that, so.
So again, it's an additional appropriation within the N V H Fund and about eighty thousand, and it's for a building project to be completed. That's the line item building project?
Yes.
Yep, yep. And it's concrete, electrical.
Yes, yep.
And you've got three beds and?
I'm supposed to have them by Monday, so hopefully we can get the concrete all done on that. Do you know anybody who wants to give me a vote? I'm glad to listen.
What's the going rate for concrete pre yardage?
Do what?
What's the going rate right now? That you can get him something.
I don't know, because I I usually, when I buy it, it's already, you know, they put it down and.
Well, he locked it in from last year's prices, so he, he, he got a pretty good deal, it was around a hundred-and-fifty-eight yard right now. Last year, it was around a hundred and ten.
To twenty-seven hundred yards?
Twenty-seven hundred yards, that's how big that building would be. It's a lot.
That's like thirty-nine hundred.
I understand anybody.
Four-hundred and five thousand dollars.
But it'll store everything we have, and I'm not going to say what else is going to be stored in there, but, uh, there's snowplows, all of our summer equipment, winter equipment and everything else.
Look at that direction, I assume.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, I'm not going to say, so.
Is there a motion?
We got, the sheriff's got some of that building now.
So you're saying?
We paid for a lot of common sense.
Yeah, I know.
You can't use it for buildings as well, aren't you sure? Hang on, man, so you're saying this concrete is going to cost eighty thousand dollars?
To pour it.
To pour it, okay, okay.
And not be paying for the concrete.
Gotcha, okay, I'm like, we don't have enough money.
Then, this is the rebar and pour it, we'll do the drains and everything, we'll pay for all that and finish the project, so.
Gotcha.
My goal here is by this middle of the summer to be done, with it completely scooping in.
Can I come put my handkerchief in?
Sure, you can, I don't care.
Any other questions or comments? I entertain a motion. The fund is supported, correct?
Yes.
So, second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, the same for Mr. Scott to approve the additional appropriation in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to the project, building project within the NPH fund. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, rule call, please.
Lemming?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hicks?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item under new business, County Auditorian Angie Jorvis, with the transfers of appropriation regarding the Otters and Eligible Reduction Fund.
Um, I am just asking for a transfer of appropriation from contractual services of four thousand dollars. A thousand dollars for dues and subscriptions for a total of five thousand to our equipment fund, or our equipment account. Uh, we recently had new carpet laid in our office. Um, our floor mats were old, cracked, falling apart. Our chairs were mismatched, old and falling apart, so we purchased, you know, thirteen, I did, thirteen new chairs and floor mats. And this isn't County General, this is IUD funds, so.
Any questions or comments from the members? If there are none, I entertain a motion.
Sumo.
Second.
I have a motion, yes, I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming, to approve the additional appropriation within the Otters and Eligible Reduction Fund, contractual services in the amount of four thousand, dues and subscriptions in the amount of a thousand, to equipment in the amount of five thousand. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, rule call, please.
Scott?
Hi.
Lemming?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item under new business, HIDEVE, County Sheriff's Department, Dell Garcia, with the transfer of appropriation from the general fund.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, thank you for having me here tonight. As you guys are aware of, we've had issues the last several years with staffing of the jail. Uh, we are improving on that, as of January of twenty thirteen, when I came in, or twenty-twenty-two, or January twenty-twenty-three, when I came in, we were, uh, short nineteen staff members. We have hired fourteen, uh, since January. We have, we've had a couple that, that's, uh, that left for other higher-paying jobs. Uh, but we are moving in the right direction. Right now, we are twelve people down. However, in, in, in our line of work, you just don't plug and play people, where they get to start doing the work right away. Uh, our, our new detention deputies have to go through training, uh, they have to go through jail school, and then they have to go through a field training, uh, program that we have for them before they are released on their own. So we're still, uh, paying some, a lot of overtime until we can get them going. Uh, we're anticipating that by the end of May, uh, we may be, if no one else leaves, uh, we're looking at possibly being six positions down. Uh, so we're hoping that the last two quarters of the year, the overtime won't be as, as much of an issue as it has been, as it's going to be, as it's going to be this, these first two. Uh, so we are asking that, uh, that we transfer funds from the salary, portion of our budget to the overtime, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars to make sure we can, uh, get through and, and, uh, properly staff our jail.
Are there any questions or comments from the members regarding the transfer?
But when you hire more people, you're going to need to just hire thousands back, ain't you?
Well, if, if we can hire all six by the end of the year, if we can hire all six by the end of the year, a lot of the, a lot of the we hired was early on, I mean, we're still pushing forward with two, you know, two or three applications here or there, uh, so it's slowed down a little bit, uh, but we're anticipating, we're hoping that we do have that problem and are able to fill every position, and of course, if that happens, then we may be coming back to, to do that. But I know for the last several years, a lot of the monies that, uh, went back to the fund, general fund, that, uh, we weren't paying out for those positions, so.
I don't even remember the last time we were, we were at full capacity.
So we're, we're hoping, our goal is to get there by the end of the year. Uh, I mean, we've done a lot of things, uh, today we were up at, uh, Heartland Career Center, uh, at their jobs fair, we had a lot of applicants there, or a lot of people expressed interest. Uh, we were at ID Tech last week at their job fair, we had several people, uh, express interest. Our, our social media, uh, has been getting a lot of, uh, we've been getting a lot of interest because of our social media and, uh, you know, things changing in our culture there at the jail has helped us out quite a bit. People are enjoying coming to work, uh, but we just haven't got over that hump. We still need to push through these next, uh, few months till we can get people trained. We've sent, uh, since January, we've sent five people, uh, to jailer's school, from, that was hired from the last administration, uh, so, so we're moving along with that. Uh, we've got five more scheduled to go in June. Uh, so we're trying to get them trained as quickly as we can so we can get them out on their own. Thing is, we don't want to train them too, or, or cheat them out on their training because then we'll run into some liability if, if something in the jail happens, so. Uh, I mean, we're moving in the right direction, our, our jail population from the last, uh, since January, our daily average has been about three-hundred-and-fourteen, uh, prior to that, it was over three-hundred-and-twenty. So we're making some strides, but we got summertime coming. So a lot of times when, when summertime hits, our jail population normally goes up. Uh, we've implemented, just so that you know, we've talked to Gas City, um, judge and the Marion City Court Judge, uh, and we, uh, we're implementing a, a, um, a plan where we can, uh, get people out OR as they're, as they're coming in, still hold them accountable, bring them in, and then we can, we can OR the ones that aren't violent offenders and things of that nature, to try to keep our jail population down. Our staff is constantly going through our records to see who we can, uh, get sent to prison. Unfortunately, we have several that have been sentenced, but we're at the mercy of DOC, uh, when we can ship them off. Uh, and then we, we're still running into issues with adjudication. Uh, we've got one gentleman in the, in, in our facility that's been in there for four years and is still waiting to go to court. Uh, we have others that have been there two, three years, they're still waiting for court, so.
And they've never been to court?
Well, they've been for some hearings, but they've, they've, their trial hasn't, hasn't, uh, hasn't gone, so it's, it's going to continue. So, and that's something we're working out, I mean, you know, the judges and the prosecutor's office, obviously, they've been low on manpower too. Uh, COVID was part of the issue with that gentleman, it was right around COVID time, uh, so.
Time going to be more than four years?
Well, it, it better be, because it, it, his charge was severe, so it should be more than four years. So we're working, we're in, in a communication with prosecutor's office. And we want the judges to try to get those things rectified and, and get people out of there, so. Uh, I think things are going pretty good and, uh, we're just, we're just needing this overtime money so that we can pair people.
Well, how, uh, how much is in the overtime account, I mean?
Well, we were budgeted for, for this year, we're budgeted a hundred-and-seventy. In twenty-twenty-two, a hundred-and-fifty-seven was budgeted at the beginning of the year and the last administration had to get an appropriation of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to help with the overtime budget. Uh, we've worked, our, our, our jail staff has worked right now, three-thousand-twenty-six hours overtime. Uh, because, which you have to remember, the, the new people that we're hiring can't be on their own and then when we send people to get the training that they need, makes us short on manpower, so. But once we can push through, get the people trained, that's why I, I believe that the, the last two quarters of the year, uh, we're hoping to see those numbers go down. I can't guarantee anything, because we don't know if people are going to stay employed here, or if they're going to leave or go somewhere else, so. Uh, but that's what we're pushing for and working towards.
If there's no other questions or comments from the members, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President moved to approve the transfer as presented.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Lemming to approve the transfer, uh, of a hundred thousand from sheriff's account to overtime. The sheriff's salaries account. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, rule call, please.
Scott?
Hi.
Lemming?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you, sir. That concludes the new business, we'll move on to the old business, HIDEVE, County Commissioners, uh, Mark Barzey, which, uh, he's over here. Additional appropriations within the opioid settlement fund. If you can recall, the last meeting, we took action to have the opioid settlement agreement between the commissioners and Marion General Hospital. We didn't have it advertised, uh, for the meeting, so this is to clean out, uh, old business as far as advertising. Did it advertise it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what the dollar amount was, it was a thousand?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars? Yeah. So it's a additional appropriation in the amount of a thousand dollars regarding the opioid settlement fund. Do we need to suspend the rules since they're not here or not, you know?
Well, since it was a pending advertisement last time.
I would say, we'd probably be fine. Okay. So our motion?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to, uh, accept or approve the one thousand dollars for the commissioners.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Polling to approve the additional appropriation in the amount of a thousand dollars, uh, within the opioid settlement fund, twelve-thirty-eight. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Uh, rule call, please.
Lemming?
Yes.
Polling?
Yes.
Scott?
Because of my absence and missing the presentation, I will abstain.
Very well. Hicks?
Yes.
Nettlesworth?
Yes.
Motion carries. Right?
Yes.
Do we have to have a motion because it's a?
Does it have to be unanimous, since it's additional on the first?
It would have to be, it carries to the second, remember? Right, it carries to the second, really.
I'm right, I'm not going to, I'll change my vote. I'm good with it.
Can he do that?
He can do that.
Okay.
I trust you guys, so.
Tell me about it. Say it real fast.
So, motion does carry, that's right, it may have us to.
Yeah, okay.
It's just so that the, the hospital can get a big grant for like five-hundred thousand dollars, which will then be dismissed into Mark Spencer's court, which then, what?
That's a thousand, that's going to be leveraged for five-hundred thousand.
Correct.
Yep.
Any reports, resolutions, communications, general discussions from the members? Many reports?
Sir?
I will, uh, say, uh, the jail study, uh, had their meeting. You have anything you want to add from the jail meeting?
Hmm, not available.
The recommendation that Mr. Lemming and I heard from Envoy and the consultants was, um, a five-hundred-and-fifty-eight-bed facility is the recommendation.
Yeah, I was there.
And, yeah.
Can you say that number again?
Five. Five-hundred-and-fifty-eight bed is what their projection, projections are for twenty years and the amount was eighty, eighty-eight to a hundred-and-ten million.
Yeah, but he said it'd probably go up to a hundred-and-ten million.
Yeah.
I have nothing positive to say.
So, I mean, just food for thought, if anybody wants to see the book and the presentation, I'd be more happy to get you a copy.
I have a copy in my office if anybody wants to come in and see it.
But, uh, you know, it was, it was a shocker for sure. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, May the seventeenth, uh, twenty-twenty-three.
You gotta use them all, make them all the jail, the courthouse or something.
Thanks, Larry.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you organizing the meeting last week.
Is there anything you'd like to see?
Different? Uh, I haven't really had time to drill down on it. I certainly like this presentation a lot better than the one we had last week. I think there were going to be some issues in Gas City with the one we had last week.